So people will know some of the people that are working in their behalf.
Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Lisa Daria, training deputy clerk.
Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeff Aludo, county administrator.
Thank you all. Stephanie Summer Odom is president of the commission board. We will move forward. We have quite a few items on our agenda. We'll start with budget adjustment, number forty-four for a year in adjustment to the Board of Elections Personnel Appropriations. Jeff, will you lead us on this?
Uh, yes, just very quickly, Madam President, this is a end-of-the-year adjustment related to personnel for the Board of Elections. Whenever we go through an election period, it's difficult to project precisely how much personnel will be used based upon all the different poll workers and temporary staff that are used by the Board of Elections. We reconcile that after the election period, do any adjustments that are needed typically out of the elections reserve, which we have, and that's what this would do, is to allocate $225,000 to personnel to ensure payroll costs for the Board of Elections personnel for the election period.
Thank you. I'll open it up for any discussion. Vice President Reese. No discussion? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve budget adjustment number forty-four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Odomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Strehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We will move forward. Our next item on the agenda is Court of Appeals 2022 budget, and we have Julie Karsnesler here. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. May I remove my mask?
Sure.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Julie Karsnesler. I am the court administrator for the First District Court of Appeals. I want to first thank the Board and the county administrator Aludo for inviting me here today to share some of the work of the court and our plans for 2022. Just a little bit about the court. We are one of the twelve appellate districts of the state of Ohio, and our jurisdiction consists of only Hamilton County. We hear appeals from each of the five local trial courts in our county. The First District is committed to enhancing county constituents' interaction with the justice system, specifically at the appellate level. Twenty twenty-one was a year of progress for our court. In January of twenty twenty-one, Judge Bergeron was selected as the administrative judge for the First District, and at that time, he announced a number of initiatives for the calendar year with a focus of modernizing our court, ensuring efficient operations, and making the court more accessible for the constituents of Hamilton County. Our first major focal point for this past year, like many other entities in this county, was modernizing our technology. The court sought two technology grants from the Supreme Court and was awarded both of those, and thereby we received funding for laptops that allowed us to remote work during the COVID-19 pandemic. We also, in May of twenty twenty-one, received an additional grant to, by the Supreme Court, to allow us to update our email system to Microsoft Office Outlook and to update ourselves to Microsoft 365. This is very important to the court. It allows the court to increase security for cloud-based services. Right now, the court was using Google services, cloud-based services, so this will allow the court to be more flexible with our cloud-based services. Another area of focus for this past year was to increase the accessibility of our court. First, we installed recording equipment in two of our courtrooms to allow continued streaming of court proceedings on YouTube once the court returns to in-person arguments. The court conducted a survey mid-year, and we found a lot of positive feedback. A lot of people enjoyed being able to just pop open YouTube and watch court proceedings, and so that is a service that the court wishes to continue for our county. We also want to, we've also redesigned our website. This should be, should be going live soon. This is to focus on ease of use for our customer. Again, this was funded by a Supreme Court grant. The court also hired its public information and data specialists to increase outreach and court transparency. This is the first position of its kind for an appellate court in Ohio, and we're very excited to have this position. We also have committed to a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. First, this court, or this year, we held an initial implicit bias training. This was through the University of Cincinnati, and we are focused on more, providing more training in the new year. We also have created a minority internship program in partnership with, with the University of Cincinnati to host summer interns. Again, we are hopeful to, we are continuing that program in 2022. Finally, we also focused on increasing efficiency in our court. We created a mediation program. This is to offer an alternative method for resolving cases that is less adversarial and provides for a quicker resolution to cases, allows parties to be part of the outcome. We've also implemented a new case management system through the Supreme Court and Thomson Reuters. This is, provides the court with a wide array of information to analyze our trends, gauge, engage the court's overall effectiveness. And finally, we also sought input from the Ohio Supreme Court's Case Management Section to evaluate the court's overall operations. They provided a number of recommendations to our court to improve the processing of cases, and we have been taking this year to implement those recommendations. So for 2021, our operating expenses was approximately $71,000. For 2022, the court is seeking approximately $140,000, an increase that would almost double the 2021 budget. And then, secondly, there is a request for personnel expenses for a new position that would serve not only the Court of Appeals, but all courts in Hamilton County. So why the increase for the operating expenses? The increase is really driven in part by the many advancements that the court has made in 2021 that I just outlined. First, as to technology. The court is on a four-to-five-year replacement cycle for computer hardware. The court last received updated desktops in 2017. Accordingly, the court is due for new replacement computers. However, the court would like to take this opportunity to reconfigure our computer system and maximize flexibility for employees and to use those laptops that were grant-funded to lessen costs for our county. Obviously, all of our county agencies, we saw an increase in the need for remote work during the last two years. Currently, the court uses a VPN, which logs each individual into their desktop back at the office. What we are asking and seeking to do is to, instead of purchasing new desktops, we would, we would purchase a terminal server so that employees could log into that server and utilize those laptops that were provided by the Supreme Court. This would be more secure and would also reduce the maintenance and support costs by our IT contractor. Currently, they charge per equipment, so by reducing our number of equipment, we would reduce the cost to the county. And then, the only other thing that we would need to do would be to replace our monitors. To put this in perspective, we are seeking approximately $29,000 for this computer replacement. In 2017, the, the cost for desktop replacement was $34,000. So we, this would be a savings to the county. Additionally, as I indicated about the updates that the court has made to Microsoft Outlook and 365, the cover, the Supreme Court grant covered just the upstart costs. We are going to need additional funding for continued licensing of the Microsoft Outlook and Microsoft 365 into the new year. And additionally, same thing with our redesigned website. We will need additional funding for maintenance and the annual fees for that new website. And then, as to accessibility, the court was also requesting additional funds to allow for an advanced training for in-implicit bias and to build a diverse and inclusive workplace. The court investigated a number of organizations that could provide this type of training. We found that the proposal by the Avant Group was the most lucrative. It provided, the proposal provided for six different training sessions for a hundred employees. Our court is not that large, so it also gave us an opportunity to invite other Hamilton County court employees to join us for those trainings. So that is part of the increase, the requested increase by the court for 2022. And then, finally, our largest increase can be attributed to the court's request for personnel funding through a position entitled the Director of Strategic Management and Cross-Court Innovation. The intent on this position is to improve the justice system in Hamilton County in an innovative and holistic way. The genesis of this idea and this position really grew out of discussions and lessons that were learned from the COVID-19 pandemic. Currently, there's no organized structure for the six courts of our county to share information and feedback. So there are, of course, common problems and obstacles across all of our courts, and this is the perfect time and opportunity for the courts to address problems in a collaborative fashion. It would allow courts to share technology, share resources. It would also allow the court, the courts to develop best practices for the administration of justice in Hamilton County. It would position us to be a model court or a model system for other counties in our state. And the Court of Appeals feels that it's in a unique position to bring all the courts together. It is our position that, this position would provide administrative support for all six courts of the county. It would focus on obtaining grant funding, focus on community engagement and technology innovation for all of our courts. We also envision this position to be a way in which the courts can assess alternative dispute resolution programming to ease the expected influx of cases that we're all expecting in each of our courts. And then, finally, we think that this position would be poised to really assist the county IT working group to investigate court infrastructure and recommend potential improvements. So that is the basis of the court's increased funding. So are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you for your presentation. I'll open it up for Vice President Reese. Did you have any questions?
Yes, thank you for the presentation and the new ways and utilizing technology. I do want to get back to the, the budget increase on here. So your operating expenses are going to go, were going to double last year, so it's about $140,000 to $623. Is that all technology? Because you have on here, you got some grants. So we always look at grants as cutting down the cost.
Sure. So, yes, there is a lot of technology advancements, and that is a lot of the reason why the court is seeking additional funding. The, the grants that we received covered the upstart, the transitioning us over to Microsoft 365, transitioning us over to Outlook, building the new website. It does not cover the continued costs. So that's what we were seeking funding for, for 2022, is that continued, to cover those continued costs.
Okay. And then, this will all be completed in '22, or would this be phased in?
All of these are either in progress or will be completed by end of year or by June of 2022.
So then, the second item, personnel expenses. What is the salary on this? I know total with benefits and salary, it's $110,500. What would be the salary of the position?
Thank you. The proposed salary is $85,000. We investigated kind of other similar positions throughout other state courts. It seems as though this position is more often found at the state Supreme Court level, but again, in thinking through the lessons learned through the last two years, we felt, the, the Court of Appeals felt like this would be a perfect opportunity to bring that type of strategic planning to an intermediate appellate court and to a county such as Hamilton County that's a single county with just several trial courts underneath one appellate court.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Strehouse.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here this afternoon. So the common system that you, or the common person, rather, that you are going to put in place, talk to us a little bit about that collaboration amongst all the courts, and you mentioned that there are six of them. So have you communicated with all six to make sure that everyone's on board related to the collaboration that this person would try to organize over at the court?
Thank you, Commissioner. The Judge Bergeron has had some initial conversations with judges from the Common Pleas Court, and they share his enthusiasm with this position, but as of yet, we have not had formal discussions with each of the trial courts that would be benefited by this position.
Okay. Anecdotally, I've, I've heard with some of the new judges going in, some of their frustration was related to the, the technology and how it needed to be upgraded, so it seems like you're moving in that direction, and this cross-court communication, and it seems like you're addressing some of that here, too. So, you know, I'm supportive of this because I think you're moving in the right direction. I, I think I'll be curious to see an update related to the other courts and how quickly you can get everybody on the same page, because I agree that this cross-court communication is really important and something that we should be striving for. So I applaud the effort.
Great. Thank you, and I'm happy to look into that further. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions. First of all, the Supreme Court is really recognized in Hamilton County as other courts came in to present. They received a lot of grants from the Supreme Court, so that's a great thing. I was looking at your operating expenses also, and you were saying it would be $140,000. I was trying to add it up, and I looked at the computer replacement, I looked at the website, and I also looked at the Microsoft, $6,700 for that, and I came up with about $40,000. So I'm trying to figure out where the other $30,000 would, is needed.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. And it is, a lot of it is the computer replacement. The other big expenditure that we're expecting for the new year is, you know, most trainings have all, in 2020 and 2021, went back to virtual, a lot cheaper, but we're expecting an increase in in-person trainings. And in order for our court to remain, and our employees to remain competitive with the private sector, we feel that it's necessary to increase the training opportunities for our court staff. So I know that that was a additional expenditure. The number I did not provide in my proposal, in my presentation this morning was also the training, the avant training. That is, I believe it's $12,000 is the estimated cost for that, so that would be an additional cost.
Okay. And you did mention avant training. It's just not included in here.
Correct.
I think it would be good to include it so it, so the numbers add up.
Sure.
You know, so. And was there anything in addition that maybe you didn't include?
I think that's it.
Okay, so that would make it about $62,000, so we're, you know, a little short, maybe $8,000 short, as you mentioned about the increase, so I'd like to know where that additional money, not now, but if you could let me know, that would be great.
I sure can.
Okay. That is all that I have. You know, when we got the grant from the Supreme Court, did they give you the option of laptops or desktops?
I was not with the court at the time that they obtained the laptop, but I think it was specifically for laptops to allow remote work.
Sure.
So that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Our next item is comprehensive COVID-19 report. Commissioner Greg Casterman.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, Commissioners. Unfortunately, the last two weeks have continued to trend in the wrong direction in many respects. So I'll walk through these numbers, but certainly not as hopeful as they were a month ago and a few weeks ago. As far as COVID-19 activity within Hamilton County, we are at 5,900 active cases of COVID-19. That is up from a couple of weeks ago when I last presented to the commission. We were at 5,200, so about 700 additional cases. Our seven-day average, you can see it kind of started to peak and then dropped down just a little bit. Our seven-day average right now is at 199 cases per day for Hamilton County. That's a seven-day moving average. I will say, when you look at the reproductive number, it looks kind of positive, right? We're, we're below one. Today, we're at 0.93 for Hamilton County and 0.91. But I think what's really happening, this bottom graph shows testing. In the last few days and the weekend and Thanksgiving, probably resulted in a lack of testing. And so I don't want, even though a couple, the numbers dropped slightly, I think it's probably more a result of lack of testing over the holiday weekend. Our percent positivity for the region is 9.3. Hamilton County is just slightly below that at, I believe, 9.03. Hospitalizations continue to be on the rise right now. We are at 454 individuals within the hospital system, 133 within the ICU, and 97 individuals on ventilators. I often show the slide of age. There's really been no difference in the age demographic ending up within the hospital systems. Somewhere between the ages of 50 and 79 are the predominant group ending up in the hospital. As far as level of COVID transmission, there are 171 cases per 100,000 right now. Two weeks ago, there was one county, Athens County, that had transitioned downward. You can see they are back to high transmission. So the entire state of Ohio at this point is high transmission for COVID-19. So switching now to the positive news, we are continuing to make progress with vaccinations. We are now at 72% of our total population above the age of five, having been vaccinated, which is excellent. That had stalled out at 71 for quite a few weeks. And you can really see the contributor here is this younger demographic. Diving in a little deeper, looking at Hamilton County, for those between the ages of five and 11, we are currently leading the state and the national average, which is great news. Diving in, so Hamilton County right now is at nineteen, or I'm sorry, 18%, Ohio is at 13%, and the national average is about 10%. Now, if you look at some of the other metropolitan counties here in Ohio, we kind of land right in the middle of that pack. Delaware County has traditionally been, as far as vaccinations go, way ahead of the rest of the state. They're at 31%. Franklin County, 20%. As mentioned, Hamilton County is 18%. Cuyahoga, 17, and Montgomery is 12%. So right in the middle. But I will say, here in Hamilton County, we have really created great access to vaccines, and we continue to work with all of our partners to make sure that anyone wanting a vaccination, whether it be a child or an adult getting a booster or an adult getting their first shot, there are lots of opportunities to get that. I would recommend visiting testandprotectcincy.com for the most up-to-date information. And then, lastly, since we last met, there's this whole new variant discussions. And I will say, there's really not a lot of information yet. There's a lot of speculation. The CDC is watching it closely. We know that the, the United States has banned travel to eight African countries. Those are found on the map above. We know that this variant is classified, similar to how the Delta variant was classified, as highly transmissible, which means it spreads easy. But that's about it. We don't know how, how much efficacy the vaccines will have against it. We do know so far that the vaccines have been very good against other variants, including the Delta variant. So the public health message is still simple. If you've not been vaccinated, get vaccinated. If you've not been boosted yet and you're ready for it, get boosted. Anyone over the age of 18 can get a booster shot. And lastly, all those other things that we've been doing throughout, and I know Commissioner Reese often asks me, like, we should not forget hand washing. We've done such a great job. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we were out of hand sanitizer. Is that because people weren't using hand sanitizer and washing their hands? I'm not sure, but let's keep that up because we know it works against all infectious diseases. So as long as we- So as long as we as a community continue these items, we should be in a good spot. That's my hope. That is all I have prepared, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I did an interview yesterday after President Biden did his speech, and so with the local media, and mentioned that Hamilton County staff, the ones that are under the Board, we're lower than we need to be as it relates to percentage of vaccinations. So we have to be advocates. We can't, you know, do as I say, not as I do. And so I think we have to take a more aggressive approach, our Board, to look at how do we get the ones that have not been vaccinated, because it is their right, to maybe look at testing for those who cannot prove that they've been vaccinated. Because as you were saying, it's a deadly disease. We all know that. And we can't ignore the fact that our numbers as Hamilton County staff are not where we need to be. I have my chief of staff speaking with you as it relates to possibly having maybe your van come down here and it be a Hamilton County Day. And Bishop Hilton will be getting with you on that once I find out where our Commissioners are with it. But we need to move forward quickly, so. And since I'm speaking, I'll just go to the vaccination. You don't have to go through it necessarily, but your slide on vaccinations, I noticed that it stopped at fifty to fifty-nine. And I think because at higher age is they're, you know, you know, they're getting their vaccinations and the numbers are so high, but we don't want to forget about those ones that are, usually you have like sixty.
That's, yeah, I just did it actually for a visual so you could see that little spike in the younger age group. But you're correct. Those over the age of sixty have hit that target of seventy percent.
Right, and that's why...
Most of them are over eighty percent.
Okay. What can we have? Still put them on there?
I'll throw it back in.
That'll be good. So we can go to a hundred. That'd be great. Okay, that's all I had. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Commissioner Kesterman. And I want to thank you, your staff, and the partnership that we've had as we've gone mobile and we've done some innovative. I think our numbers reflect the innovation that has come out of Hamilton County through your leadership and leadership of partnerships with others. We've been to the movies. We've been to the breweries. We've been to restaurants. We've been everywhere. We have been pulling up, we drive-throughs at churches. And we've been to some areas, too, that need relationship, a little more talking. We went to a senior facility in Colrain Township. I remember a gentleman showed up. We got there at ten AM. He was there at nine forty-five. Your nurses kept talking to him, and we were supposed to leave at twelve. And at eleven fifty-nine, he was convinced, I will get the shot, you know. But after that, he got on Facebook and he called his wife. And she said, finally, someone could talk some sense into him. But we've had those relationships. So I do want to just commend the job that has happened. We were in St. Ursula, and I got to see families come when our bus went to St. Ursula. And people were coming with the whole family to get the shot, because now everyone was eligible. So we have had some wins, but we still have a lot of work to do. As this second variant has come up, I'm concerned about, we have CARES Act dollars that are running out or had to be used by the end of this year, actually, end of this month. And we had a lot of money on Test and Protect. And I got a call today from the CEO of the Urban League, because they were running Test and Protect. And over the holidays, he said they were getting a lot of calls. I got some calls on Thanksgiving Eve. I said, well, you know, the bus is not out, you know. They're home with their families, too. But we started to see that there still is a need for testing. And I know we've got the home test kits. Some employers allow them, some don't. Where do we go from here as those dollars are gone for testing? What's the next, now we have a new variant, we're going into the holidays. We don't know what January is going to be. We have a budget that we have to vote on. What are some, can you tell us what's going to happen with that? And I know you don't have everything, but I wanted to put that on the table for our administration as well. Because testing is still going to be needed even after this. Because unfortunately, this COVID thing is just will not die.
I know. Let me first start by saying, one good news is that the new variant is still detectable with the testing that is available. So that was actually a big question mark, and it looks like that will still be the case. So that's good news for us as a community and really a nation and world. So that we'll still have viable tests to detect that new variant. As far as Test and Protect, it's been an extremely valuable resource in the community. When the administration first put this program into place, there was almost no testing available within Hamilton County. In fact, I remember my team running with the Ohio National Guard, six clinics at these random sites in Forest Park and Lincoln Heights and other communities. And there were lines of cars trying to get tests because there was just so little access to testing. Today, my understanding is Test and Protect makes up only about ten percent of the testing in Hamilton County, so a fraction of the total testing. And since implementation, we have access now to these free test kits from the state of Ohio. So it is my hope that as we kind of transition through the end of the year and into the new year and new funding opportunities, that some of these home test kits will kind of take the place of what Test and Protect offered. They're convenient. They're easy to use. The state is actually, my understanding, I heard through a media report, and it was confirmed by state leadership, is still continuing to purchase those at-home test kits. They're shifting their model a little bit. What they're finding is most folks are testing themselves and not using the telemedicine. Meaning before I go to Thanksgiving, rather than calling the doctor and getting the full printout, I'm just kind of curious if I'm sick. I do the nasal swab. I get the answer, and I move on. And they're a lot cheaper. And so my understanding is the state's kind of switching more to that model. They're still making the other test kits available, but they're trying to prolong their funding. So our plan as a health department is to continue to offer those at our clinics. I believe the library is planning to continue to offer those. And I believe between those and private resources, there should continue to be access to testing.
Thank you. That's very important, because, you know, when you say private, that's a cost.
There is a cost.
And we were able to, I just, I just was concerned. I wasn't as concerned until this new variant came out. Then I'm like, hold on, you know, we got to make sure. Because if we have people not getting tested and they're just out there, and, you know, that could be an issue. And if we make it where it's financially an extra barrier on there. So that's something I just wanted us to look at as we are getting ready for our budget and those kind of things. Because all these things have been free and accessible. But now a new variant comes out. We're coming right out of the holidays. I mean, Christmas, major travel season is happening. Just wanted to make sure we are ready to go if something were to, you know, rev up on us.
Absolutely. And I do, I do want to add, you know, when I talk to my colleagues around the state of Ohio, clearly, public health and counties, it varies between rural and urban. But this county commission has been extremely supportive from day one in our public health response. And my team thanks you. It's really been part of the success for Hamilton County, has been the collaboration between public health, the Board of County Commissioners, and the administration. And, you know, you've had the best testing program in the state of Ohio, possibly nationally. Your access to vaccine has been the best because of these partnerships. So thank you very much for the leadership of this commission.
Thank you. And we want to keep this partnership. We don't want this to be a one-time.
Absolutely.
I've been on public health for a long time, and I chaired the Health Committee at the city. They called it the smallest committee. And Mayor Cranley, about two months ago, he said, we should have listened to you years ago. Because public health is everything. Without your health, you don't have wealth. You don't have economic development. You can't go to a job. So health is number one. So we want to keep that partnership with you. My last question, we talked about this, because you know, I always talk about that, about, you know, you still need to wash your hands and you still need to clean. And we start to see people, public places, starting to lax that. You used to come in and the whole place smelled like Clorox, you know, when you go to a restaurant. Now, you know, we're back to the sticky menus sometimes. Or, you know, if you travel, when you got in airplane, they were cleaning all the time. It's not, they're not doing that as much. Talk about that as your, that's your other part of your job. You go in, you also inspect places. And so are we doing those type of inspections or trying to encourage people to, you know, keep the hand sanitizer going? You know, I'm starting to see empty hand sanitizer things around. People aren't keeping that going. Can you, can you talk about that? Are we doing any inspections of that to keep things clean?
Yep. So my team is still responsible for all the restaurant inspections in our jurisdiction. We have, I think, roughly twenty-eight hundred facilities. That's grocery stores, gas station, quickie stops, and restaurants. And so when we go out, we look for all types of sanitation issues. But we are only in these stores typically twice a year. And so I always encourage the public to visit our website. If you see an issue, visit HamiltonCountyHCPH.org and file a complaint if there's an issue. And that gets us into the store more often. And if there's an issue, we typically are successful in getting that resolved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Kesterman. Always good to see you. So I wanted to ask about testing as well, because we've got some things happening at the federal level related to testing, potentially locally related to testing. And so the CARES Act dollars run out at the end of the year. And I've been talking a little bit to the administration about maybe using ARPA dollars for this. I mean, they're obviously applicable, and we could set aside, I don't know how much, maybe a couple million for testing purposes to continue to test for free in our community. In addition to what you have said, which is the private and some of the other ways to get that test and the at-home test. I think, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but so if, I've also been thinking through kind of shifting this model, as you say, to at-home test as opposed to going somewhere and getting tested. I think the challenge is that some places don't accept the at-home test as a verifiable result. I think the schools are saying you can't use those at-home tests when a child is out for a while and then comes back. So do you know if that, if the state were to shift, or if we were to shift to that at-home testing model, is there an expectation that those would be accepted then at places of employment or schools? Or will we have this weird tension between that test result not being accepted?
So traditionally, places of employment are special because they can set their own standards. Traditionally, schools are following public health recommendations. We align always and have throughout the pandemic with the Ohio Department of Health, specifically their Infectious Disease Control Manual. Right now, that manual would allow a child to shorten their quarantine time if they test negative using an antigen test or a PCR test. Both are required to be medically observed. A medical observation would include a home observation through one of those free test kits. Now, I spoke just a moment ago about the free test kits that don't come with that medical observation. Those would not count for a school release.
Okay, so let me clarify this then. So the ones that the library has and that you have are the ones that are observed. And so those qualify.
That's correct.
But there are other test kits. Where are the other test kits being distributed?
So ODH has actually just started purchasing them. And we, I believe, are starting to carry some at some of our clinics. If we aren't yet, it will be in the coming weeks. And once again, it's really for the reason that most folks are not getting the medical observation. You know, if the state purchased a certain number, they're able to see how many actually got the medical observation, and it's less than half. And so they're trying to reduce costs. But we are carrying currently and plan to carry currently both types, and the state is offering both types.
So let me ask you then, the next question along those lines. If we were, as a commission, to invest in additional testing going into next year, would your recommendation be to stand up test sites as we have in the past? Or rather, I don't know if you're even purchasing, I think you're getting them for free, right? The tests from the state. But, or to have a stockpile, perhaps, of those at-home tests where people would, there would be some kind of access point for people to get those as opposed to setting up the sites? Or is it a both-and situation?
You know, I think both have had their benefits. I really think some of the communities served more recently by Test and Protect are difficult-to-reach communities, and they've done a great job getting into those communities. If people are thinking ahead and take the steps to get an at-home test kit, boy, they're convenient. I mean, you have a result within fifteen minutes. You can do it in your jammies at night when you start coughing and you start to worry about your illness. So there really is some advantage to that model. Access is certainly there. You know, we have heard maybe four or five months ago about the libraries running out of these free test kits. That happens. That happens typically when you see those spikes in cases, and you do see more illness in a community. But generally, the at-home test kits have been fairly reliable.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You made an interesting comment when you said our Test and Protect program only reached ten percent of the testing. So that's significant for me, because as we have to spend our money at the end of the year, do we want to pump up our percentage of money, I heard, two million possibly? But I think we need to look at the places that are actually doing the testing and also the state and what they're sending out before we think about pumping more money into it. I'm going to have my chief of staff work with you to look at a map of where testing is actually taking place.
Sure.
But not only where it's taking place, their commitment to go beyond twenty-one to continue testing. And if we see that's a significant amount, there's really no reason, in my opinion, for us to pump up more money into that proposition, so. But thank you so much for your information. I appreciate it.
I got another question.
Okay.
I got another question. And also, I want to maybe look at being a little more flexible, because COVID is not, it's not standardized. Once we, you know, we beat them over here, they come over here and beat them over there. And that's why I think the technology is very important. And what I like about the flexibility. So one of the things I just wanted to also look at as we're looking at potential in the future, we will have the five-one-three relief bus, and it'll be a new technology-based bus. We continue to want to partner with you, with public health. But maybe there is a, where the need is, be able to do a hop-up testing with the bus as we're already, you know, is it testing we need? It might be, this month, we can do testing if we see this variant really getting hot and heavy. And you could kind of tell us, like, okay, it's going to be, the bus is going to have testing this month and a shot or, and the home kit. Kind of gives us the flexibility if it, you know, if we need it. Then the following month, we might not need it. And so then we not doing testing, we're doing something else with public health. I think that's kind of, because it's kind of hard to, you know, COVID is fluid, and we got to be fluid. So that's one of the things I want to also look at, to see how we can better utilize the mobile operations that we have and be able to service whatever that need happens to be. Is it testing? Is it a new, we might have a new vaccine out. It might be a new booster out. Whatever that is, it gives us that flexibility to be prepared to fight however we need to fight COVID-19, or it might be COVID-2022 or whatever.
We stand ready to be flexible. That's what this pandemic has taught all of us, I think. Flexibility is key.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Twenty-twenty-two CDBG Action Plan Public Hearing. Emily is coming. Oh, that's not Emily.
I'm not Emily. You're exactly right. I'm president. I'm Steve Johns. I'm the Assistant Director of the Planning and Development Department. And I just wanted to do a quick intro into this item. Emily will be diving into the details. You're going to be getting two things from our HUD funding today. One is the Action Plan for 2022, and the other is the CEDAP, the Community and Economic Development Projects from this year. So you get both what we're thinking of going to be doing and some really cool projects that are going to be awarded this year.
Sure.
But before I wanted to get Emily up here, I wanted to note that today, unfortunately, is Emily's last day with the county. So here she is, in front of you, giving two presentations. And this is the kind of person she is. So I wanted to recognize her service to the county. She's only been here a couple of years, about four or five years. But she really has done great work across the county, for our jurisdictions, and then filled in, you know, when our past Community Development Administrator left back in August. So to step up for that and to continue to work right into her last day, I tell you what, something else. So we're sad to see her go, but I did want to give her a quick round of applause for all her work today. And again, thanks to her, and she'll get you into the details.
Thank you so much. Well, congratulations as you move forward into your new endeavors.
Thank you.
And thank you for the interaction that you and I have had together, so.
It's been a pleasure. It's good to be before you guys one last time today. So I'll jump right into it. So this is the first public hearing for the 2022 Annual Action Plan. And just to give you an overview, this, this action plan is a HUD-required plan, and we do this every year. And it's to inform how we're going to use our CDBG. And it's to inform how we're going to use our CDBG, Home, and ESG funds for the coming year. So this is for, as Steve mentioned, this is just for the coming year only. And so I'll go through a little bit about what's currently in the draft plan. And the plan will be finalized by the beginning of the year for a second public hearing and your approval. And it is currently up on the Community Development's website and open to public comment. So any comments can go to Steve Johns. They can also come to Clara Kyle in our office, and they'll make sure they get where they need to be. And then any comments will be included in the final plan. So our 2022 grant estimates are flat for the coming year. If you'll remember, we did add the Village of Merrimott and Sims Township. So CDBG is slightly higher. That's because each community contributes a certain amount of money, so that's the estimate for that. So it'll be approximately 3.5 million in Community Development Block Grant, 1.5 million in Home, and then roughly 290,000 for our Emergency Solutions Grant. And you can see, it slowly crept up a little every year for the past few years. So our program year is March 1st through February 28th. So this plan is due January 14th technically, which is Friday, to HUD. So it will be ready to go and approved by the March 1st date. And as you can see, there's a certain formula that HUD uses to determine our grant amounts. And those are some of the different pieces of the formula. It's quite complicated, but in general, that's how we, our allocation is determined. So these are our participating communities. We have been continuously increasing those as well. We're up to 43 out of 47 eligible participating jurisdictions, which is great. And all of the, I almost skipped over our wonderful committee, our Community Development Advisory Committee. And we, it's, currently have one vacancy actually, but it's made up of different nonprofit organizations, local government, different community development financing folks. So we have a real, a lot of expertise and a lot of really great input from this committee. And they help review and determine some of the projects from our competitive processes throughout the year. So diving a little bit deeper into the Community Development Block Grant for 2022. So typically, we divide up the community projects and the countywide programs, roughly 40 to 45% of the total grant. So the community-specific projects are requested by all of our eligible, our participating communities, excuse me. And that's actually under a three-year cycle. So every three years, we allow each participating community to get at least one. And depending on how big they are and how much they contribute to our grant, sometimes several projects of their choosing, basically, as long as it's eligible. The community-wide programs include a whole host of things, including our Nonprofit Services RFP, our CDAP, which I'll talk a little bit about here after this presentation. It can include mini-grants and some other different things. And then you can see Planning, Administration, and Compliance. That includes things like our Fair Housing Services, obviously, our personnel salaries, indirect costs, everything else. So as I mentioned, the community-specific projects, those are budgeted within a three-year cycle. So we're going to, 2022 will be the second year of that. The communities request funding based on what their allocations are. So each community, as I mentioned, doesn't get a project each year, but they will have the opportunity to get one at least every three years. This is an example of a recent project that we did. This is a new ADA-compliant playground in Delhi Park. So these are a few of the, it has a floor-and-place service and everything. So it's almost fully accessible. It has some of the musical components that are earned as well. Also, under our Community Development Block Grant is the Mini Planning Grant Program. So the past several years, the County Commission has allocated $100,000 out of Block Grant for mini-grants, open to all participating jurisdictions. And the intent of this is to kind of allow the communities that don't really have a lot of planning capacity themselves to plan for larger planning projects. And, you know, often those can become part of our CDAP program. So this is a sample from last year. This is a drawing out of the City of Norwood's mini-grant. Okay, our Nonprofit Services RFP. So this happens in the spring. And we usually come to the commissioners ahead of time for any priorities you all would like to see from our eligible public services. These contracts run July to June. And so this is a whole host of things. This is how we fund statements at DePaul Charitable Pharmacy, Legal Aid Society, Mortgage Assistance, a whole host of different things. Again, here's a sample from this past year of funding. Woman Helping Women, Sensee Smiles, Legal Aid, Free Store. We did have several new nonprofits apply this past year due to our relationship with the CARES nonprofit program. And so we did get to fund some new organizations through Block Grant, which was really great to see. And then finally, with Block Grant is our Community and Economic Development Assistance Program. So this was created also several years ago to help communities with more impactful projects. They should be focused on revitalizing the community, spurring other development, or making way for other economic development in the community. So this committee is actually made up of some of our CDAC members, as well as HCDC's Economic Development Committee. And this is one, you'll see this in a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself. This is one from this year, Delhi Township Mixed Use Center. This is their site plan. Okay, moving on to Home. The 2022 Home Estimated Budget is about 1.5 million. So this past year, and keeping in line with that this coming year, most of that grant, about 90% of it, is going to go towards housing development projects and programs. So we have a, it's called our Home RFP that we put out. So that can be homebuyer developments. It can be rental developments. It can be new development. It can be rehabilitation. So any, anything that's creating preserving affordable housing. So that will go out later in the year. Also funded under administration with our Home Administration are our Housing Action Plans. We brought this before the board a couple months ago now. We have partnered with LISC and CBI to do housing action plans for participating communities. Kind of stems from the Housing Our Future and kind of focusing in on the individual communities, what they can do regarding housing. So if you'll remember, we have completed five so far, Addison, Chiviet, Deer Park, Norwood, and Silverton. And then we've scheduled three more over the next few months. It'll be Golf Manor, Lincoln Heights, and Forest Park. So looking forward to those. As I mentioned, we have our Home Affordable Housing RFP. These are, this is one of our recent projects that was recently completed. It was funded a few years ago, but Logan Towers, which is here in the city. And then our ESG budget. This is awarded through the Continue of Care Strategies to End Homelessness is the organization that currently receives these funds. So those all go to strategies for the Rapid Rehousing Program and Administration. So that is pretty much in a nutshell. So the action plan is a very prescriptive HUD plan. But there is a lot of good information sort of within it. As I mentioned earlier, any comments from the board, the public, anyone can go to Steve or Community Development, and they'll be included in the plan.
Thank you so much. Is there a need for another public hearing, or just this one and then on the website, as you were saying?
We don't, we usually do two, but there's not a requirement for two. So that's up to the board.
Okay, very good. And I was going to ask about the administrative costs. Is there a percentage that you, how you determine administrative costs? I'm looking at.
Yeah, so the amount, the limit is 20% of the grant. And we usually, it includes several different things. And then we usually, we roughly budget for that amount. And then we can take it from there for other programs if needed throughout the year. But it includes our Fair Housing Services, as I mentioned, and a few other things that would seem like programs, but actually fall under administrative for HUD's purposes.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Reese?
Thank you for the, thank you for the presentation. I guess I had a question, two questions. One is, how do we overlay this, I guess, next year, what we want to do with affordable housing? We've got money we're putting in from the American Rescue Dollars. We're trying to plan it. Then we have, of course, these type of dollars. And we're trying to like overlay that. Does this allow us the flexibility, or?
Yeah, so the Home in our plan is detailed in a broad manner. So, you know, if you wanted to use this for, just as an example, like homebuyer housing and use ARP for rental, like this doesn't prescribe exactly to that level of detail how you're going to do that. So any sort of affordable housing really can fall under this. So however you choose to do that can be worked out later in the year.
And then the other thing, does it allow us flexibility on technology? I know we're going to be putting some American Rescue Dollars into that, but just want to make sure, just like this time, we were able to be flexible to use that for a grant program at the, at the end that helped out some areas, Lincoln Heights, Chiviet, I think, Deer Park.
Yep.
Lockland.
Yeah, so broadband is, broadband specifically is being encouraged by HUD to be used with CDBG. So this, you could use this for that. And so really, you can change things in this budget up to about 10% before you have to kind of go through a process and get approval by HUD. But, so there's nothing specifically in it that calls out broadband because we actually use our CDBG CARES dollars for those Wi-Fi projects that you mentioned. But within that 10%, I think that there's definitely enough flexibility within the Block Grant and the action plan to be able to do something like that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you. Thank you, Emily, for the presentation. Thank you for your years of service here at the county. We're sad to see you go, but congratulations on your next chapter.
Thank you.
We'll try to get you out of here, so, because it's your last day. So just a quick comment related to all of this. It's a, it's a good plan. Thank you for noting some of the priorities of this commission and previous commissions, especially related to affordable housing. It's obvious that that has shown up throughout this plan. And as we have said a number of times, it's one of our top priorities. So I just appreciate you responding to that. And it clearly shows up in the report, and you and the rest of the staff for acknowledging that we need to do more in that space, especially through some of these federal funds. So thank you for your work and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's keep asking her questions so she can stay.
I got one out there. It's not basically maybe for you question-wise, but when we get the resolution or whatever to pass, one of the things that we, I had asked your predecessor, and I think she verbally told me, but when we're using federal dollars, now we got county dollars, and we're waiting on a Crowson study. But when we use federal dollars, they have inclusion numbers that have to be met. I don't know, it's called Title something.
Section 3.
Section 3, yeah, section, I remember that Iris Rowley is probably watching, and she always talks about section 3. I just want to make sure that that is in that resolution because this is an area where we can see that we're doing some things and that people are included. Businesses, minority businesses, they should be included in these projects that we have on the federal level while we're working on the county level. So I want to have that in the resolution that we pass, that we do. We will adhere to section 3 that has inclusion numbers and goals based on federal guidelines. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I already said goodbye, so.
I actually have another presentation.
Stay in touch.
I got one more.
Madam President, I was going to say Emily's not leaving that quickly because she has one more presentation to do. But we will need to close the public hearing as well.
Yeah, I was going to wait until.
So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will jump into my next presentation then. So this is just a presentation of the recommended awards for the 2021 Community and Economic Development Assistance Program. So this is really just informative today. These contracts are being worked on, and they'll come back before the board for approval at another time. So you can see, this looks very similar to what I just showed you, but this is the 2021 CDBG allocations. So this falls under those countywide programs. And you can see, under Countywide Economic Development in the green over there. So a good chunk of our Block Grant funds. I think this is exactly what was in my previous presentation. So the CDAP, you know, again, is supposed to be impactful projects that help economic development, whether that's direct businesses, site assemblage, removing blighted properties, any of those sorts of economic development-related activities. So the review process for the CDAP program, only participating jurisdictions can apply. We had a kickoff meeting with a Q&amp;A with some participating local governments on July 8th. Pre-applications, which generally are to determine CDBG eligibility, were due on August 2nd. Full applications for those who were eligible were due on September 7th. And as I mentioned earlier, the advisory committee for this includes a few members of the CDAC, as well as a few members of HCDC's Economic Development Committee. The advisory committee met on September 27th. And then they selected finalists, and those finalists were invited to make presentations on October 13th. And then the advisory committee submitted their final scores and then their project recommendations. And here I am presenting the recommendations to you. And I do want to give a special shout-out to this committee. They were very helpful, especially this year with Joy having just left. We have a lot of expertise on this committee and a lot of really good discussions about economic development in these communities. So these were the eight projects that were eligible and that were invited to make full applications. And then these are the final recommendations. A few, we had actually withdraw applications. So you can see these, these five left were the ones who submitted and presented, and they were all recommended for a certain amount of funding. So you can see that Deer Park, Deer Park Blue Ash Road Revitalization, that's actually a building that we're going to remediate and tear down as part of their whole corridor that they're working on. Loveland is the acquisition and remediation of 501 Loveland and Deer Road. And the acquisition and demolition of that property provides access to a much larger property for redevelopment. Springfield Township, Galbraith Road Improvements. This is roughly at Galbraith and Ronald Reagan. They're putting in a medical office building. So this is making some adjustments to the intersection there and some different things. Springfield Township, the Township Innovation Center is actually for Brentwood Bowl. They're going to be redoing that, and they have a partner involved in that. And then the Delhi Township, excuse me, is the Delhi Mixed Use Project. So that's on Delhi Pike. We actually provided them CDAP funding. I'm sorry, could be flipping through, I guess. Here's the Deer Park Road. And this is Loveland. This is the one that, the acquisition of this leads to a much larger property for development. You can see this is where the medical office is going to be, right there at Galbraith and Ronald Reagan. Brentwood Bowl, this was actually, the mural was actually a CDAP project several years ago and the landscaping, the little patio in front of it as well. And then this is that site plan again. So this is a very large mixed-use development over on Delhi Pike. And as I was mentioning earlier, a couple years ago, and we provided this project with CDAP funding as well to Demash, the former Brentwood. to Demash, the former Remke Building, I believe it was the former Remke, that was there to sort of pave the way for this development as well. And I believe that's all I have. So as I, as I mentioned, if you all, barring any questions, issues, these will come back before the board at a later time, once we have contracts to be approved. Any questions?
Thank you so much. I was wondering about the loan process. All of them have an option to have a loan, and where does the money come from?
So that is also block grant. So basically, we have a prescribed term, it's 0% for up to five years. And the incentive is, it's, the incentive is that they're supposed to get some additional points in the scoring system if they say that they will take part of it as a loan. And the intent is to sort of recycle those back into the program as a type of revolving loan fund. It has, not a lot of communities have been requesting loans. So I think that's something that the team will have to revisit next year and see how they can either reincentivize that or something. But yeah, so those, as they come back in, those are going back into the CDAP program.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I want to go to Brentwood Bowl.
Okay.
Springfield Township.
Okay.
Not a great bowler, but I used to take my nephew up there. He was on a bowling team, and so we would practice up there. What's happening with this? This is, is this an acquisition, or?
So they've already acquired it, so they're working. Can I disclose who they're working with? Do you know? Okay, they have a brewery partner. I'm not sure if I, how, where that deal is, so I don't want to disclose that. But, so they're going to, the township is going to be responsible for redoing the parking lot, doing some of the demo inside, and getting it ready and prepped for this brewery to come in. And there's gonna be a couple of other, maybe like small pop-up type businesses in here as well. But the main, the main thing is going to be the new brewery.
Okay, great. And then, and our dollars help them do what? I know you showed the mural, but what?
So the mural and the patio were a few years ago. And then the, the parking lot and that interior demo and prep work is what the block grant funds will be used for this coming year.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dre House.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Emily, again. I'm looking at the 2021 recommendations chart of the approved projects. Can you walk me through this? When we have, the first column is the grant and then the loan. Total CDBG and then the project total. I'm having a hard time squaring these numbers.
So the grant and loan together equal the CDBG. So there, due to a couple of other canceled CDAP projects, we have an increase from what we normally have. So that's the 1.2 and the 100,000, or the 1.3. The project total is all other sources of funding in those projects. So obviously, like the Delhi Mixed Use, they have a private developer, they've, they have bonds for that. So that obviously is, as you can see, you know, 31.5 million dollars in excess of the CDAP. Some of these, so the town, Springfield Township, the Township Innovation Center, that is just their piece, that project total. So obviously, the brewery that's coming, coming in is going to be contributing more to that. But that's gonna be separate from our piece, so that's why that's not included. Does that?
Yeah, well, when I look at the Deer Park, item number one, the grant's 160,000, the loan is zero. So that, but the total CDBG is 152,000.
That is a mistake. I, yeah, so the total CDBG is actually, so the request is what is under the, the grant. And then since we, the requests were over slightly what the amount that we had to award, the total CDBG is actually the amount. So you can see that the committee decided, instead of cutting one project, you know, by, I forget how much it was, they just basically took the same percentage off of each project. So the, the chart is incorrect. So the grant, the grant for Deer Park should actually, the amount they're being recommended for funding is actually that 152,940.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that, yeah, and the next one's the same. 300 is higher than the total, so I was a little confused.
So the actual amount is the 286,765.
And the Delhi's the same. So, so, and to that point, though, so the total CDBG is a little bit lower than the project total, but they're filling in, it's almost like a local match, or isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So there's, there are other dollars in here.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to bringing this forward at a future meeting.
Definitely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will move forward to item number six. But before we move forward, I always like to ask if the commissioners have anything, any comments they'd like to make before we go into executive session? No?
No comments.
Wow, okay. Well, we will move forward into executive session. I need to put on my glasses, so. So I would make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22 G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney to discuss imminent litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you.